Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, September 9th, meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. And would everyone please rise for the pledge of the flag?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Hayes.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am present. This evening, I want to take a little bit of time. I would like to recognize a local family business that we have here in Tocco, who has reached a milestone in their business career. I'm going to ask Tony if you'd just stand up here for a minute, because the camera may kind of pan back and forth. Just stand at the podium here. I'm going to say a few words, and then I'm going to ask you to say a few words, too. Tony Zepiri Jr., he runs a small auto repair shop here in Tocco, and they've just reached their 50th year of servicing the village of Tocco. Zepiri Auto Body was started by Tony's dad, Tony Senior, in 1958, and in 1963, they moved from Yonkers to their current location right up here on Columbus Avenue. What most people don't know is that Tony is the one responsible for keeping our police department cars up and running. Many times, I'm sure, way too many to count, Tony will get the call to please drop everything he's doing and do his magic to get car number so-and-so up and running. So I just want to say that he never fails us, and so is a valued vendor and local business. I want to recognize Tony's family business and offer this proclamation. And if you give me a second, I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas Zepiri Service Station is being honored for servicing our community for 50 years by Mayor Eklund and the Tocco Village Board of Trustees at a village board meeting dated September 9th, 2013. Zepiri Service Station, established in Yonkers in 1958, moved from Yonkers to 154 Columbus Avenue in Tocco in 1963. And Zepiri Service Station continues to serve the Tocco Police Department and the Tocco Housing Authority. And Zepiri Service Station's motto was, and still is, "Quality Care and Commitment Since 1958." Therefore, be it resolved that I, Stephen A. Eklund, Mayor of the Village of Tocco, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of Tocco, do hereby proclaim September 9th, 2013, as Zepiri Service Station Day in the Village of Tocco. And we want to congratulate you for that.[186.81][186.81](applause) Tony, if you wanted to say a couple of words?
Yes, thank you so much. I cannot put into words, the way I feel right now. For people to know, this is my younger brother, Stephen. He is a mechanical engineer, and he works for United Technologies, and he has his doctoral degree in engineering. So on our behalf, we would like to say good evening, Mayor Eklund, and Village Board of Trustees. The Zepiri family would like to thank all of you for acknowledging our business in the village for the past 50 years. We would also like to thank the Village of Tocco and the citizens of Tocco for giving us the honor, opportunity, and privilege for keeping their equipment and vehicles safe and sound, in the present, I mean, in the past, the present, and the future. We know if our parents were still here with us, they would have been very proud of this accomplishment. And we thank the village and the board, and everybody that I help. We can say thank you.
We have our former mayor here, who I'm sure has communicated with you on many occasions as well.
Yes. And I said to former Mayor White, it's in the little biography, I don't know if you had seen it. It was a New Year's Day, we got a phone call. One of the cars was broken down on Main and Columbus. So my dad sent me out with a tow truck. As I'm bending down with the chain hooking up the car to bring it down to the shop, I heard a voice say to me, "It's New Year's Day, why are you working?" Little did I know, when I worked up, when I looked up to see who it was, it was Mayor Phil White. And I said to him, "It's just another working day for me."
And him, too.
And him.[295.83][295.83](laughter)
Well, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to present this to you all over here.
Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.[304.83][304.83](applause)
Congratulations.
Tony, congratulations.
Pleasure to have you.
Trustee Quigley, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was nice, thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, and I'm going to move to the adoption of the minutes, which is the approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of August 19th, 2013. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Are there any correspondences this month?
No, there are none.
Thank you. I have no appointments to make this evening, so this is going to be the first opportunity to address the board on anything that is on our agenda tonight. So if anybody wants to talk about something that's on our agenda... And that will then move us to our resolutions. Our first resolution tonight is Resolution Number 1, to enact and adopt Local Law Number 3 of the year 2013. A local law amending and adding Article 5 of Chapter 15 entitled miscellaneous offenses and provisions, Sections 15-55 through 15-59 of the Village Code of the Village of Tocco, entitled Reusable Shopping Bag Initiative. Do I have a motion in favor of adopting Local Law 3 of the year 2013 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? There being no second to this motion, I'll ask the deputy clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Opposed.
Trustee Hayes.
Opposed.
Mayor Eklund.
Opposed.
Please let the record reflect that this motion has failed. We're going to have some comment on this. There's no public hearing open on this, but I'm going to give the trustees an opportunity to weigh in on this. I'll just speak very briefly first. The matter of prohibiting plastic garbage bags in our establishments has been an interesting one, and I want to thank Trustee Quigley for bringing this issue to the forefront. For me, it has been an issue of impressing upon our constituents and our local businesses that we must take responsibility to address matters such as the ongoing use of plastic, or any other type of bags for that matter, when we have the availability to use reusable shopping bags. Where I've had difficulty with this all along is the legislative component of imposing a financial penalty for something which I believe can and should be a volunteer responsibility by both the consumer and the merchant. So that's been my position on this. So at this time, I want to give the other board members an opportunity to comment, and we'll start off with the sponsor of this, our trustee, Stephen Quigley.
Thank you, Mayor. History has repeatedly demonstrated that good ideas remain just that, ideas, unless there's some measurable enforcement behind them. There's numerous examples. A couple I will give you are the seatbelt laws. Everybody agrees that wearing seatbelts saves lives, yet every state has a mandatory seatbelt law. There's also consensus that texting while driving is dangerous. Every state is now in the process, if they haven't done already, enacting no texting while driving laws. By our natures, we don't like to be told what we can or cannot do, even when we know that what we are being told to do or not do is right. The vote tonight is based, at least in part, on the presumption that people understand that there should be restrictions on the ever-expanding uses of plastic shopping bags, but don't need the force of law to reduce their use of such bags, or to find less environmentally destructive alternatives for carrying away purchased goods. In reality, this wishing and hoping that we will do the right thing, just because it is the right thing, is simply not enough. I witnessed an excellent example a couple of years ago. Rhode Island requires motorcyclists to wear helmets. Massachusetts does not. I was driving behind two motorcyclists in Rhode Island. As soon as they crossed into Massachusetts, they stopped, removed their helmets, and continued to ride. Now, these riders are apparently not concerned with all the studies showing that helmets are literally lifesavers. They knew that since they were now in Massachusetts, where helmets are not required, they removed the helmets. Now, I was willing to negotiate with our board regarding the dollar amount of the fines in this law, which even in its current form would not have been imposed until the earliest the second violation. But as the vote makes clear tonight, there was no support for sanctions of any kind. A toothless law, though, has no reason for existing, as it is nothing more than a collection of words encouraging a change in business practices. Now, the arguments against the law included inconvenience to the shoppers and extra costs to the merchants. These arguments, in fact, are similar to the kind of outcry against Mayor Bloomberg's plan not all that long ago to ban smoking in all restaurants and bars in New York City. Dire predictions of enormous losses to the owners and closings of these establishments were made. Yet, several years later, the local bar and restaurant scene in New York City is thriving, as is, by the way, the bar and restaurant scene in Tocco, where all smoking in these establishments is totally banned. Indeed, this board itself recently voted unanimously to ban smoking in Tocco's parks. Do people need to be told that smoking is dangerous, and that it certainly should not be done around children? Of course not. Yet, we deemed it appropriate at that time to enact a law banning such activity. Again, it took a law to force a desired objective that has unquestionably benefited everyone. I would like to believe that my colleagues' hope for our residents will take it on themselves to reduce their demands for plastic shopping bags and to recycle the bags that they do accumulate. Reality suggests otherwise. For example, there's been a prominent sign for a number of years at the Stop &amp; Shop supermarket on White Plains Road, encouraging the use of reusable shopping bags, which the store has actually sold for years. Yet, week after week, I watch the majority of shoppers resorting to the supermarket's own plastic shopping bags. Now, Tocco residents can drop their plastic bags off at our DPW for recycling, but our weekly pickup does not include plastic bags. And according to a report issued by County Executive Rob Astorino, Tocco recycled only 56% of its waste in 2012. Now, this is better than the county-wide average of 52%, and considerably better than the nationwide average of 34%. Slightly better than half, however, is not something to be proud of, especially in our village, where it cannot be easier to recycle paper, metal, glass, plastic, and cardboard. If many of our residents are not willing to make the minimum effort required to place these recyclable items at the curb, how likely are they to carry plastic bags to the DPW yard? Now, finally, is discouraging the Tocco rather than being in the forefront of this steadily increasing trend toward banning plastic shopping bags will actually make news as a municipality that rejected this simple step toward becoming a more environmentally and sustainable community? I wonder what it is that my colleagues find objectionable in this law that was not evident to the Democrats and Republicans in Rye and Mamaroneck, where virtually identical plastic bag laws have been enacted, or that was not evident to the communities such as Southampton, New York, and Westport, Connecticut. These places are not, to my knowledge, the kind of leftist cities such as San Francisco or Seattle, where such laws have also been enacted. Now, in closing, I hope my colleagues here are right, that Tocco retailers and shoppers in Tocco will voluntarily reduce the number of plastic shopping bags. I hope that our residents will carry reusable bags, such as the bag that I brought to the hearings before, these little foldable Chico bags, or even carry a couple of plastic shopping bags in their pockets, purses, briefcases, backpacks, strollers, and cars. That stores, such as Epstein's, will begin to sell reusable bags, that all retail stores will now ask shoppers whether they want a plastic bag, rather than automatically providing one, and that our residents will bring their plastic bags to the Department of Public Works. I will be thrilled if these events prove me to be wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Tiere Dog.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. First, I guess I need to clarify that, once again, I voted, not quite understanding the way the motion was, because I didn't believe it was seconded, I meant to vote in opposition of the motion. So if we need to have another roll, I'm willing to do that.
Yeah.
Should we do it now?
Yes. Trustee Giordano.
Opposed.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
Opposed.
Trustee Hayes.
Opposed.
Mayor Eklund.
Opposed.
Thank you. So now, to explain my rationale. First of all, I think what I'd like to do is to thank Trustee Quigley for bringing this issue to the forefront. I think that the concepts that he has expressed are ones that are worthy of discussion and worthy of activity within the village. And I think those are being concerned about pollution, being concerned about recycling. And for that, I think that there has been a positive outcome with respect to the proposed legislation. I would like to make a distinction, though, and to say that I think that there is a distinction between things such as seatbelts, smoking, helmets, and texting, which I see as being matters of imminent life and death, which is a little different from this. And for me, I would say that this falls into a category where I would rather see positive enforcement than negative enforcement, unlike seatbelts, smoking, helmets, texting, where the consequences are so imminently dire. I'm hopeful that there can be more discussion that may lead to even a commitment by the village of resources, towards education, towards getting those numbers higher that Trustee Quigley refers to. I think that those are good uses of resources, and I would support them if they were measurably proposed. So I think that pretty much sums up my thoughts on this.
Thank you, Stevenson. Trustee Luise.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to just probably, I'm going to mention a few things what I mentioned back in May, when this issue was on the agenda. And obviously, my position hasn't changed, and I echo what Trustee Giordano said, and I also appreciate what Trustee Quigley is trying to accomplish here. I told the mayor a story just yesterday. You know, I was walking along the West Side Highway, it was down by the Intrepid, and there's a section of the West Side Highway where there's a sandy beach, and I just peered over the railing, and there was such a collection of plastic bottles there, that it was just amazing, and I just thought, that's probably just a little tiny, you know, tip of the iceberg with this kind of pollution. So my point is, plastic bags in the Village of Tocco, to me, I think we have bigger issues to concern ourselves with as a board right now. I think it's something that we should look at further down the road, as was already alluded to by my colleagues. I am, as I said back in May, and I'll say it again, we have a tremendous recycling program, and I know Mr. DeMarco is still moving ahead with these programs. I believe that we have to educate the consumer. I believe we have to educate the residents of Tocco. In my travels throughout the campaign, and even now since this legislation has become public knowledge, the vast majority of residents and business owners have said to me that they were against this ban. I think, again, we need to educate the public. You can recycle plastic bags. We recycle plastic bottles, we recycle newspapers. So everything that we see, I see potato chip bags when I walk along the Bronx River Parkway Trail. I see plastic bags along the Bronx River Park. Are we going to ban everything, because it's not being disposed of? If people dispose of this litter properly, the problem will diminish, if not eventually go away. So in closing, I'd just like to say, I'm glad that we are going to allow the residents of Tocco to make their own decisions, and I'm also glad that we're not burdening the residents and the business owners with another useless government mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. I first wanted to start off by saying that I respect our fellow board member here, Trustee Stephen Quigley, for bringing this item to the forefront that you felt so passionately about, and so I threw into your research and continued to engage the board, as we discussed over the past few months. There wasn't one month where we didn't discuss what could possibly be adjusted or changed to maybe meet everyone's specific idea of what they would have liked to possibly see come forward, so I wanted to thank you for that. My main concerns, as some of my other fellow board members have already mentioned, and I don't want to keep repeating, with this current proposed legislation in its current form relates back to the fines and penalties that would have been imposed on the one single segment of our village population, which was our merchants, if they didn't comply with this. And I had said to myself, well, what would happen then next, if we did impose the ban on just the business aspect of our community? And we all know that every one of us puts out our trash for DPW to pick up on Mondays and Fridays, in our hefty, big, black garbage bags. So what's the next step down the road? Does it continue on? Does it end? I'm not sure. This was my main two big concerns here. Me, now being the liaison with our environmental committee, I have to go back to them at our next meeting, and they're probably going to say to me, "You know, really? What happened here?" But my pledge to Trustee Quigley is to continue to talk with them, and maybe we, as a group, can really rally together and continue to go out to our businesses and educate them on reusing within the community, and maybe just continue to educate everyone that way. We need to work as a group together to do a better job of that, I believe, and I will vote and work with them on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution Number 2 is approving the Junior League of Bronx Villes' request for the use of the Tocco Trolley to remain stationary at the Immaculate Conception School parking lot on Saturday, October 5th, between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. for the Junior League of Bronx Villes' Touch a Truck event. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number 3 is approving refunds totaling $8,032.43 for the list of properties that follow, having received a reduction in the 2013 assessments by the Small Claims Assessment Review, other known as SCAR, and they are listed in our agenda. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number 4 is approving the Columbus Day Committee of Eastchester-Tocco's request to close off Depot Square for their annual Columbus Day celebration and St. Pio feast on September 20th, 21st, and 22nd, 2013. The event hours on September 20th and 21st is from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m., and on September 22nd, from noon to 8:00 p.m. In addition, they request approval for the use of the village streets for two processions. September 20th, the procession begins at Assumption Church at 7:00 p.m., and it ends in Depot Square. And on September 22nd, the closing procession will leave Depot Square between 7:00 and 7:30, and will end at the Assumption Church. A further request is made for the use of the Tocco Trolley on Friday, September 20th, and again on Sunday, September 22nd, to transport participants from the church to Depot Square, and then back to the church. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is similar to what we did last year, although we did tighten up a little bit of the time on the event, as well as we made sure, after a meeting we had last year with some of the businesses down in Depot Square, that we let the Columbus State Committee of Eastchester and Tocco know that there's going to be no food vendors alongside Depot Place, which is in front of the restaurant in Carvel and so forth. They'll have some vendors there that, I guess, will be selling goods, but then they will actually pick up their tables in the evening, and then they'll reestablish again on Saturday, when the event starts up again. So we were sensitive to some concerns that we had from some of the merchants, and they were more than happy to comply with our request.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number 5 is approving payment of vouchers in the amount of $229,266, consisting of Abstract Number 9 for $21,227, Abstract Number 11 for $203,990, Abstract Number 12 for $4,049. The three largest bills we paid were $126,376 for medical insurance premiums for the month of September, $11,673 for those nice new carpet tiles in the community center, and $11,220 for yard waste disposal costs for the period of January 1st through June 30th of this year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. We actually have very few of our department heads here tonight, so I'm going to ask Frank DeMarco, is there anything you want to add to tonight's meeting? Nope, so we're good. Counselor, anything?
No, Mayor.
Nothing at all. Camille?
I just want, I have one.
Oh, good, good.
I usually don't. I just wanted to remind the residents that the resident parking permits will go on sale October, well, not on sale, we don't sell them, will be available October 15th.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous business, the farmer's market is going to be located, or I should say relocated, to Fisher Avenue on Sunday, September 22nd. The residents' community meeting, we're going to have one on Wednesday, September 25th, at 7:00 p.m. in Winslow Circle Park. And I've had a few people say to me, "Where is Winslow Circle Park?" And my answer to that is, if you're on Winslow Circle, which is a very tiny half-circle, and you get to the middle of that half-circle, I guess we're going to call that Winslow Circle Park. So it's a small, little area, we've never had a meeting there. I went by there at 7:00 the other night, just to make sure that, it's a very shady area, and it's definitely still light enough at 7:00, and let's hope it doesn't rain. If it does, we will go down to the community center. The Gold Star Mothers Ceremony is going to be on Sunday, September 29th, at 11:00 in the morning, on what's known now as the Main Street Bridge, and shortly after 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, September 29th, will be known as the Gold Star Mothers Memorial Bridge. The County Shredder is going to be in the Fisher Avenue parking lot on Saturday, October 5th, between 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. The next village board meeting is going to be on Monday, October 7th, and our village offices will be closed on October 14th in observance of Columbus Day. And that brings us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and we are going to start with your deputy mayor, none other than Tom Tiere Dog.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. I'll be brief this evening. I just wanted to give the residents an update on the status of our ongoing outreach to Metro North regarding complaints as to the duration and number of horn blasting that's been occurring, which seems to be with ongoing frequency. We had been told that it would subside after the Crestwood Station construction had ceased. We've now waited a couple of weeks beyond that, and the experience has been that it hasn't, not only has it not become less frequent, but it seems to become more frequent. It's continuing during the, what has been called the quiet hours, which are between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. We've reached out to some of our municipal officials and other municipalities to see if we can create some type of a collaboration, in terms of a collaborated response, and also reached back out to our Metro North representative to explain that there hasn't been any abatement or reduction of the noise that we had been promised. So we continue to work towards a resolution that will make the residents comfortable.
Thank you. Trustee Quigley?
Thank you, Mayor. As always, lots going on at the library. Most important is to remind everybody again that they've been able to add hours to their weekly service. also reached back out to our Metro North representative to explain that there hasn't been any abatement or reduction of the noise that we had been promised. So we continue to work towards a resolution that will make the residents comfortable.
Thank you. Trustee Quigley?
Thank you, Mayor. As always, lots going on at the library. Most important is to remind everybody again that they've been able to add hours to their weekly service, and we open on Wednesday nights till 8:30 now, and Saturdays from 10 to 2:00. So these added hours hopefully will be of great convenience to the community. Some of the special events going on this month, on Friday, September 13th, a program on preventing Alzheimer's and reversing dementia. Some new discoveries or some new developments in treating this very debilitating disease. They're always trying to bring our community up to snuff in terms of our digital knowledge. And on Tuesday, September 17th, bring your Nook iPad, iPhone, Kindle, your mobile device, and learn how to download books, music, and videos, and become more familiar with the whole process. Gentle Chair Yoga will be going on on Thursday evenings in September and October. This is a way to get good exercise without all the stress that sometimes accompanies regular yoga. There is a cost for this, but again, details can be gotten at the library. Lots of teen events going on. Digital Downloads for Teens will be on Wednesday, September 18th. The book club this month is Vampire Night. That will be meeting on September 19th. That's a Thursday afternoon. The movie this month is The Host, September 25th, and there'll be a video game night on September 30th, actually, video game afternoon at 4:00. There are adult movies every Wednesday. There's lots and lots of activities for the infant to two-year-old crowd, the two- to five-year-old crowd, and almost everybody else who has any kind of an activity. So check out the library, go down and visit it, look at their website, and you'll find lots of very interesting things to do. And then just one reminder, the Chamber of Commerce reminded that their big annual golf tournament, the Mickey Scoling Golf Tournament, will be Monday, September 30th. They're always looking for people who are willing to sponsor and to sign up for it. Just go to the Chamber's website, either on our, the village's website, or they have their own Chamber of Commerce for Eastchester-Toccoho. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. I see the chief is not here, but I wanted to make one announcement on his behalf. I didn't want anyone to forget that. The 10th Annual Toccoho Police Department Community Day is coming up. It'll take place on Saturday, September 21st. The timing begins at 11:00 a.m. First, they will have Safe Riders Day from 11:00 a.m. until 12:30, and then also from 11:00 to 1:30, that same day, of course, they will have Child Safety Seat Event, and the Cops for Kids Kickball Game will kick off at 12:30 p.m. Again, this takes place at Parkway Oval, and the start time is 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, September 21st. All events are free, and we always have a great turnout of a bunch of our local kids within the community, and it's a great way for our police department to interact directly with our youth. I just wanted to make that announcement. As well, our trolley will not be running on Saturday, October 5th, because our village board, let me just find it, adopted a resolution this evening for the Junior League of Bronxville who requested to borrow our Toccoho trolley for that day. So again, the trolley will not be running on Saturday, October 5th. A few other announcements this evening. Our Tree Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, September 18th. That's next Wednesday at 7:30 here at Village Hall. Also, our newest edition of the village newsletter has been completed, and Frank's crew will distribute it hopefully by the end of this week to our residents as well. It has already been posted up on the homepage of our website for people to view. Yesterday, we had a wonderful event. We had our 37th Annual Toccoho Challenge Road Race. It was actually, it was a beautiful, beautiful day. The past few years have been, we've been really lucky with the weather. I wanted to say a special thank you to a bunch of volunteers who helped out this year, which includes Loretta and also her mom, Fay Blazi, Kathleen and Sarah O'Toole, and Dylan Eklund, our mayor's son, who once again this year was the artist for our t-shirt that was given out to all participants. I wanted to throw it up here for a minute, and I have to say, a ton of people kept giving compliments as we were throwing the t-shirts out.
That's grandpa on the seat, too.
Saying how wonderful it was. Yes. So I wanted to just show it. Okay, Gene. So yeah, everyone was saying how much they loved the color and the drawing this year. That's what everyone was saying.
That's Walter Hawke on the left, for anyone who remembers Walter from years back, having the store up on Main Street.
Also, I also, of course, want to thank our main sponsor once again, which was Hudson Valley Bank, and also to two owners of local businesses here within our village, The Bagel Loft in Crestwood, and also Swirl and Joy, here located at the corner of Columbus Avenue and Main Street. They both had water stations set up for us throughout the route, so they helped keep all of our runners hydrated. As well, we had many, many other wonderful local businesses who donated gift certificates and raffles and other sponsorships. And of course, without their continued participation, this event would not continue on for so many years. So I just wanted to thank everyone again. And all proceeds from this event will be donated to our village's Toccoho Beautification Committee, our Toccoho Seniors, EVAC, and ECAP, and we'll maybe have a little special presentation in an upcoming board meeting. And also, over the next two weeks, the Clerk's Office and I will work with the timekeeper of our event, and we'll work on getting all of the runners' times posted up on our website. It usually takes a few weeks to get all of the information over from him and then get posted, so we'll work as quickly as possible, because I know the Clerk's Office gets flooded with calls.
I picked it up today, so he's working on it.
Right. Also, one final, one final announcement about our road race. We, of course, at the end of the race, we have a ceremony where a bunch of participants who come in first, second, and third are given out various awards from multiple categories. If, our Clerk's Office is going to be contacting some of the winners who actually did not remain at the event afterwards and pick up their trophy. So Camille will be making phone calls this week.
We called them today, and one came this evening and picked it up.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. And finally, we have one final award that we were unable to give out yesterday, so we thought it would be a wonderful idea to give it out this evening. It's for our own village trustee, Stephen Quigley, who came in second place in his age category, and he earned the silver medal. And we said, we have to give this tomorrow night, Steve. So congratulations. I'm happy.
Thank you very much. And I would just, by to add, that's the third time I've run the race. It's a great event, and it's just fun to see the village from a different perspective in both Tocco and Eastchester, and to be part of such a great event, and such, a run with such a history. This is our 37th year.
37th, yes.
And not a lot of things have run that long anywhere in this world, so to have this race for 37 years now is really, I think, an impressive, and so well organized with Jeanette and the volunteers you mentioned, that, you know, I'll be chasing people down next year to join me, and we'll do the run again. Maybe some of the board members.
Yes, that's what I was saying. I said trustee Louisi over there, and I should have ran this year. We're going to work on it for next year.
I would have run the one mile.
And of course, Camille and the ladies in the Clerk's Office really did a tremendous amount of work for this event. They did, thank you. And one final announcement, and this will be it, I promise, our county legislator, Sheila Markcott, asked me to announce the upcoming Town Yard Sale that she helps organize, as well as Tocco Beautification and Eastchester Beautification work on it. Will be taking place on Sunday, September 29th, at Lake Isle, from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. If you would like to participate and become a vendor, the application will be posted on our village website by the end of this week, and you can also email for an application at townyardsale@yahoo.com. So I just wanted to make that final announcement.
Thank you very much. I have just two announcements. The first is, as we are all aware, school's open. It's open today, so as I ask every year, for people to please be just extra, extra cautious around bus stops in the morning and afternoon. Kids are running around like crazy. They're all excited, and they're not, certainly not paying attention to a lot of the traffic that's out there. So just use, you should use caution at all times, but this time of year, a little extra caution, because they're like jumping beans, they're just, they're so excited. And lastly for me, is our utility underground project. It's going to be shovel in the ground coming, this coming Monday, September 16th. This project is being performed by Con Edison and a private contractor. Frank DeMarco, and myself, and the chief, we're going to be keeping close tabs on this project, will be participating in some of the traffic control. Frank is monitoring all the construction activity that's ongoing. People who are familiar with the cap stand that was in the village for probably 50 years up in the Crestwood section, that is now the construction trailer for this project, and so we'll be there, you'll see us there in the evenings probably looking at some construction drawings. Contractor has a lot of experience working for the village of Tocco, as well as other municipalities, so we have a lot of confidence that he's going to minimize the interruption to traffic flow, and certainly to the businesses and commuters who are down in that area, Crestwood area. So we're going to try to get a meeting with some of the businesses there, if not this week, certainly next week, just to kind of give them a preview as to how long this project is going to take. We'll get that answer from Con Edison and the contractor on another week or so as well. So with that, that's going to bring us to the second opportunity to address the board on anything at all. Actually, you know what? I'm going to ask the chief if he wants to come on up.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the board, I apologize, I had a matter to deal with downstairs. Just a couple of announcements, and I apologize if somebody else spoke about them before me. This Saturday, September 21st, we have our Cops for Kids event. It starts at 11:00 a.m. at the Parkway Oval. It starts with a bicycle safety program where we give away free bicycle helmets to children that need them. They participate in an obstacle course. They have the bicycles inspected and registered, and there are child identification kids for anyone who would like to participate in that. That's followed by a softball, kickball game involving police officers. Hopefully, we have our standby announcer coming down Saturday, and it's a lot of fun. There'll be refreshments, hot dogs, and it's really a great day for the kids, and it's a fun day for the police officers to interact with our young people. So again, that's this Saturday, September 21st, and it's starting at 11:00 a.m. Also coming up on Friday, September 27th, is the Tocco Police Organization's Annual Dinner Dance. This year, they're honoring Vito Pinto. It's September 27th at 7:00 p.m. at the Bronxville Women's Club. Anybody that wants information could call the police desk at 961-4800, and we'll give them the information. That's it. As the mayor said, school's open, so we want everyone to be cognizant and be aware of the school buses and children running out into the street. You cannot pass a stop school bus. It's a minimum $150 fine and five points off your license. So the police officers will be out following school buses, and we hope everyone gets to school safely. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one other member report here. I can't believe that I just skipped right by, and maybe it's because I'm jealous that he's retiring in a couple of days. But anyway, please, trustee Louisi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be short. The seniors are, had their grand opening at Father Fata Hall last week. Mayor Eklund was there in attendance for the grand opening, along with Sheila Markcott, county legislator Sheila Markcott, town supervisor Tony Calavita, and county executive Rob Astirino was there also. So it's really, I tell you, I got this sense when I walked into the hall that Jennifer Vetromile has made a dramatic improvement for the seniors. It's a much bigger area, it's, the room is airy, there's plenty of parking, there's going to be a lot of great things happening here, and I congratulate Jennifer Vetromile for getting this done. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. That does bring us to the second opportunity to address the board. Anyone wish to address the board on anything tonight? And with that, we're going to move to adjournment. If there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Until next time, Tocco. Have a very good evening.